Let's call our meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Councilmember Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lowery.
I'm here.
At this time, would everyone please stand for the invocation?
My name is Mike Openshaw. I'm the senior pastor at Lighthouse Christian Church. We give you greetings from our congregation and an invitation to join us any Sunday morning for worship. May we pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we are grateful for the blessings of another day of life in this beautiful place to which we call home. We thank you for your blessings of family and of friends and of the opportunities you give us every day. We thank you for this group of civil leaders that are here tonight to govern and to make decisions in the best interest of our community. And we pray that all who speak tonight might do so respectfully and with the knowledge that they have the opportunity to be heard. May you guide and direct the decisions that are made, and may we all leave this evening in peace with one another and with you, especially because of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, Jasmine Murad, Brooklyn Savage, and Caitlin Murad will be performing the pledge.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have all of those affiliated with the Filipino Cultural Phil Am Event So we have a proclamation recognizing your event, and if you would.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. We would like to invite you on Saturday, 12 o'clock to 6:30 in the afternoon in our 17th Filipino Cultural Celebration.
You want to add more?
Okay, so this is our 17 year. Firstly, we would like to express our thanks, Mayor Weiss and the council members, for giving us the opportunity. As we said a while ago, our theme for this year is Celebrate Culture, Inspire Harmony. So we would like to show you all the different dances of the Philippines from the three main groups of islands, Luzon, Visayas, Mindanao. And also, if you like our costumes, you'll see a lot of this traditional clothing. And also, we have also beauty, like a beauty contest for kids and even for adults. And also, aside from that, you can invite your friends and family, because the Oceanside Public Library had also provided all-day crafts for kids. So our partner is the Oceanside Public Library, of course, and our main sponsor is the Tri-City Medical Center. And aside from that, because we focus on youth education, we will give out scholarships to five outstanding students, Phil Am students, who are graduating this year to go to college, and five scholarships to the Philippines in the amount of $8,100. So that's where some of the money of our members go. And of course, our donation, our annual donation to the Oceanside Public Library, about $2,500, and also to other associations. So please mark your calendar. If you want to know more about our association, go to our website, www.philamcultural.com. So it's going to be on Saturday. So we would like to show you the wonders of the 7,107 islands of the Philippines as we celebrate our culture and inspire harmony. Maraming salamat po.
At this time, Teresa Gomez is going to be coming down for a presentation of the landscape
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. We'd like to thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight to recognize our 2018 winners of the Water Smart Landscape Contest in Oceanside. The contest is an opportunity for us to showcase examples of beautiful landscaping that also incorporate low water use principles. It gives us an idea in the community of, excuse me, the positive signs of what we're seeing with reducing water use and increasing our efficiencies. I'm really proud to say the entries this year for Oceanside were more than all of the other San Diego counties together. So that's a really good sign that the community is coming together for water conservation and to be water smart. Please join me in recognizing our winners this year, and as you can see, the slides that were presented of their landscaping, Anna and John Gonzalez. Thank you so much.
All I can say is that this has been a great honor. It's really a hobby and a passion that we have. We've worked together, John and I, doing this landscaping, and we got great ideas from the San Diego County Water Authority. There was a series of four classes that we took reluctantly, but we ended up taking it, and we learned so much. And then we have great resources in Oceanside at Moody's over at the El Corazon compost facility, and as well as the compost facility. We didn't know where we were going to be able to take our old dry sod, and they took it, and it was just wonderful. We have one of the best recycling and facility that we can be really proud of, and we saved a lot of money. So thank you.
What a great example. Very generous. Thank you so much.
Closed session report.
Thank you. City Council met in closed session to discuss item one on the closed session agenda, which was a conference with the labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Western Council of Engineers, the management employees of the city of Oceanside, and the Oceanside Firefighters Association. There is no action to report on item one. The council also met on item two to discuss a significant exposure to litigation in the matter of one case. That item was discussed, but there is no reportable action under the Brown Act.
Next, we have consent calendar, items four through 17. Move approval? No public?
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0. Next, we have item number 18, which is approval of amendment number one in the amount of $1,437,010 to the Professional Service Agreement with Infrastructure Engineering Corporation for revised contract amount of $4,425,634 for condition assessment and access improvements for the Mesa Garrison Gravity Line, Mission Avenue Lift Station, Forest Main, the land outfall, and the Buena Vista Forest Main Gravity Line. Approval of budget appropriation amount of $1,500,000 from the unrestricted sewer fixed asset replacement account, and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director. I'm here today to speak regarding item 18 before you, which is an amendment to the IEC contract for condition assessment for various sewer lines. Amendment one is recommended in the amount of $1.4 million, and it includes the Mesa Garrison Gravity Line, Mission Avenue Lift Station, Forest Main, the land outfall, and the Buena Vista Forest Main. The action also includes recommendation of a budget increase of $1.5 million from the unrestricted sewer asset replacement fund, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. About one year ago, council authorized work with Infrastructure Engineering Corporation to perform pipeline condition assessments of these various lines. In doing so, they discovered that they needed to do rehabilitation of about 2,600 feet of sewer line with Kierden Place pipe, and that will be completed later this month. Access points are also being assessed as part of this work. I have a couple maps here, and I see it's a little hard to see the line being drawn, but what I want to portray with these maps is that these lines are of significant length going from the San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility in the north of the city, running south all the way down to the Mesa Garrison area. One of the pipelines also runs from Mesa Garrison out to the coast and terminates at the La Salina Waste Water Treatment Facility. As part of the site survey, IEC discovered that there were disconnected air valves and blow-offs that, for some reason, were removed off of the pipeline. Those need to be restored to ensure proper operation of the pipeline. Additional sewer design is also needed on the gravity line to alleviate a bottleneck near the reconstruction work that is undergoing right now. This is a picture of what can happen when those appurtenances are removed off of a pipeline. This is not a pipeline from the Oceanside project, but is an example of what we could see if we were not to move forward with replacing those appurtenances. The fiscal impact of today's recommended action is to approve a $1.4 million amendment to the IEC contract, which would revise the total contract amount to $4.4 million, increase the budget by $1.5 million to cover any shortfall in contingencies. We believe that this will be sufficient to complete this project. Staff recommends this appropriation be funded from the unrestricted sewer asset replacement account, and that the city manager be authorized to execute the amendment. With that, I will be at sidebar with Mabel Ueda, who's a senior engineer in the utilities division, and Amy Chikowski, who's with IEC. So we're both, or we're all available for questions. Thank you.
No public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. This obviously is very critical to ensuring that we don't have any spills, so I'm going to go ahead and move approval. Thank you.
Councilmember Feller.
I'll second it. The only question I had is, so those pipes that were originally installed, how does, how do those pieces go missing? I mean, what is, is it a valuable piece that people, is it copper or something like
No, not really. But one of the problems is that they're in areas, they just get taken with vandalism and so forth. But one of the reasons that they need to be retrofitted or rehabilitated is due to the condition assessment process. We need access points into the pipe in order to put various condition assessment technologies, like the pipe diver and some other technologies. So it's not only to protect the pipe, but it's also to facilitate the condition assessment work as well.
So we're just replacing them, but are we going to be more proactive, or have we known about these a long time?
Well, at the same time, actually, there's going to be three pieces of work that are done at the same time. So when we go in to put the appurtenances, we also have to look at the saddle of the pipe, and we're going to do a broadband electromagnetic at the same time while the trench is open. That will give us other pipe thickness and so forth. So at the same time we're doing the appurtenant repair, we're going to be doing some broadband electromagnetic work, and we're also going to be putting some coupons or some trackers. So that way, when we send the condition assessment technology through the pipe, we can track it further and get better data.
Okay, thank you.
Motion approved, 5-0. Next is item number 19, which is report on a petition titled "An Initiative Measure Amending the Land Use Element of the Oceanside General Plan to Require Voter Approval of Proposals to Change the Land Use Designation or Zoning of Agricultural or Open Space Land to Any Other Use." In city council action to: 1. Receive the report. 2. Review options and provide direction to staff on how the council would like to proceed: a. Adopt the ordinance without alteration; or b. Submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters. Adopt a resolution calling an election. Adopt a resolution requesting ROV services for November 6, 2018 general municipal election. Adopt a resolution authorizing written arguments, rebuttal arguments, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. Or return to the city council within 10 days to adopt the ordinance or adopt the resolution calling the election. Honorable Mayor, City Council, let me provide a report regarding this item. Staff recommends that the city council receive a Section 9212 report as requested at the council meeting of May 9, 2018, for the initiative measure amending the land use element of the Oceanside General Plan to require voter approval of proposals to change the land use designation or zoning of agricultural or open space land to any other use. And either adopt the measure without alteration or adopt the accompanying resolutions to place the measure before the voters at the election on November 6, 2018. For background purposes, on September 1, 2017, the city clerk received a notice of intention to circulate a petition regarding an amendment to the land use element of the Oceanside General Plan to require voter approval of proposals to change the land use designation or zoning of agricultural or open space land to any other use. In accordance with California Elections Code, Section 9203, the city attorney prepared a summary and title for the proposed measure on September 14, 2017. Pursuant to Elections Code 9205, the required publication of the notice of intent was advertised in the Union Tribune on September 20, 2017, and the proof of publication was filed with the city clerk on September 27, 2017. Within 10 days of the publication date, on March 12, 2018, the petition containing sufficient prima facie signatures was received by the city clerk's office. The registrar of voters performed a signature verification process. Upon confirmation of the receipt of the signature verification, the registrar of voters delivered a signature verification to the city clerk on April 23, 2018. On the same day, I notified the proponents with a copy of the certificate of sufficiency. On May 9, 2018, the city council was presented with a petition certification of sufficiency and the options on which the council could act upon. The council ordered a report on the effects and the proposed ordinance pursuant to the requirements of the Election Code, Section 9212. The Elections Code requires that the report be considered by the city council within 30 days of the submittal of the certificate of sufficiency. Pursuant to Elections Code 9215C, upon the presentation of the report, the city council, the legislative body, shall either: a. Adopt the ordinance within 10 days; or b. Order an election. In order to submit the ordinance to the voters, the city council should consider the adoption of a proposed resolutions adding the ballot measure to the city's next regular general municipal election on November 6, 2018, requesting the ROV services, authorizing written arguments, rebuttals, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. Pursuant to Elections Code 9282A, for a measure placed on the ballot by the written petition, a written argument in favor of the ordinance may be submitted by the filers of the petition, and the legislative body may submit an argument against the ordinance. An argument shall not exceed 300 words in length. Pursuant to Elections Code 9285A2, the author of the majority of the authors of an argument relating to the city measure may prepare and submit a rebuttal argument, or may authorize in writing another person or persons to prepare, submit, or sign the rebuttal argument. A rebuttal argument shall not exceed 250 words. Pursuant to Elections Code, Section 9280, the city attorney shall prepare an impartial analysis of the measure not exceeding 500 words, showing the effect of the measure on the existing law and the operation of the measure. On May 9, 2018, the city council ordered a report pursuant to Elections Code, Section 9212. Staff contracted with Nadelson Dale Group Incorporated for an independent report pursuant to Section 9212. The resolutions necessary to place the measure before the voters on November 6, 2018 have been reviewed by the city attorney and approved as deformed. As noted, the city council is required to either adopt the measure without alteration or adopt the resolutions placing the measure before the voters on the next regularly scheduled election. The recommendation of the staff is that the city council: 1. Receive the report. 2. Review options and provide direction to staff on how the council would like to proceed: a. Adopt the ordinance without alteration; or b. Submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters. Adopt a resolution calling an election. Adopt a resolution requesting ROV services for November 6, 2018 general municipal election. Adopt a resolution authorizing written arguments, rebuttal arguments, and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis. Or return to a city council meeting within 10 days to adopt the ordinance or adopt the resolutions calling for the election. At this time, Jonathan Borrego will come forward, and then they will present their
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Jonathan Borrego, Development Services Director. I'd like to speak before you this evening and just give a brief overview of the 9212 that was reported, that was completed at the council's direction, based on the direction as Zach mentioned, that was given on May 9. So essentially, the report which was prepared is essentially to respond to Section 9212 of the Elections Code, which provides that a 9212 report can be provided to analyze the impacts of a potential initiative here. And per the 9212 report, the following impacts may be addressed, and some of these, I believe, were discussed at your last meeting on May the 9th. But the report that was prepared under the direction of city staff and the Nadelson Group, and we do have Roger Dale here sitting at the desk, who was the primary author of the report. According to the, according to Section 9212, the following items that are shown on the slide here are able to be reviewed as part of the report. And the report that was prepared actually looked at items number one through seven. I won't go read through them. I think they're kind of self-explanatory here. The council did have the option of adding other information that they wanted, looked at as part of the report, but that direction was not given. So we stuck to the basics and looked at what's provided for in Section 9212. The report that was prepared by the consultant essentially looked at three key questions. How would the SOAR initiative potentially change future land use patterns within Oceanside? How would such land use changes affect the city's long-term fiscal health? And how would the potential change in future land use patterns affect the long-term sustainability of the local economy? And that is the ability to retain and attract businesses and development. Before I highlight the summary, or the conclusions of the report, I just wanted to give a quick reminder for those in the audience who may not be aware. But the key provisions of this ordinance essentially provide that any city, any decision by the city to redesignate or re-land for agricultural open space would be subject to, by the majority of voters, voting at a regular, voting in a regular or special election. In other words, such a change would need to be approved by the majority of the electorate voting in an election. It would also continue to keep in place the minimum two and a half acre size for residential lots. It would allow for agritourism, although agritourism, as it's written in the initiative, is undefined, provided that it does not interfere with agricultural operations and open space characters preserved. And then finally, the way that the initiative is written, it would sunset on December 31, 2038. It's essentially in 20 years. And so, one of the key assumptions of the report, and I think it's a very important point, is that for the purposes of the analysis, it was assumed that those agritourim uses that are currently contemplated by the community and by staff, is what we would call tier-one uses, would be allowed under SOAR. And those are limited, what we would call limited agritourism-type uses. And we've listed some of them here on the slide in terms of food processing, UPEC operations, small farm-to-table restaurants, wineries and breweries, small campgrounds and outdoor recreational uses, and bed and breakfasts. Under the, under the agritourism provisions that are currently being provided or looked at, those types of uses would be subject to a conditional use permit. So again, I just want to reiterate that agritourim is undefined in the initiative, but for the purposes of the report, we had to assume that tier-one uses would not be in conflict with the initiative. But that point is not exactly clear. In terms of the report, we looked at a variety of build-out scenarios. There were four scenarios that were looked at for the purposes of estimating impacts to the city. The first scenario was a baseline scenario, which essentially locks the general plan and zoning in place as it relates to the South Morro Hills area, which is scenario one. The second scenario was looking at an expanded residential build-out in which 1,200 acres of the land in South Morro Hills would be developed as residential. And just as a point of comparison, 1,200 acres is equal to about twice the size of the Arrowood community out there, which is about 600 acres. And then also, a third alternative was looking at potential to develop some industrial development out in that area, and that may sound like a stretch, of course. However, as the council knows, there is estimated to be a shortfall of industrial land in the city within the next few years. And so it is potential, it is possible that there could be some development pressure to build some industrial out there. And then fourthly, the last alternative was a combination of scenarios two and three, which included expanded residential and expanded industrial. As far as the fiscal impacts of the SOAR initiative based on those four scenarios, the study concluded essentially that the difference between scenario one, which is the baseline, and scenarios two and three, which are the expanded residential or the expanded industrial, results in a net revenue of about $900,000 annually, additional revenue to the general fund. And the difference between scenario one and scenario four, and again, scenario was four, is the combined additional residential and industrial results in about a $1.8 million annual additional revenue as compared to the baseline. However, one important point, and it's made quite clear in the report, and I think it's worth reiterating this evening, is that the surplus amounts that are quoted in the resort, it really is kind of a snapshot in time, looking at current revenues and costs. As you all know, per recent budget reports that have been presented to this body, there are some revenue deficits, there are some deficits projected for the city, starting in fiscal years 2021 through fiscal years 2223, and that's anticipated due to rising costs associated with public safety, deferred maintenance, and employee costs as well. So I just think that that's a point that's very important to clear, is to make sure that we point out that caveat. Finally, in terms of conclusions and findings, again, we went through, and the consultant and the report goes through each of the seven areas which I mentioned that were part of the analysis. So essentially, the findings of the report found that there were no general plan consistency impacts. Essentially, it's kind of goes without saying, essentially what it's doing is locking the general plan in place. Under the general plan, there is no other form of development anticipated out in the ag zone. So for that reason, it's pretty clear that it wouldn't necessarily cause an inconsistency with the city's general plan. Secondly, there is no measurable impact on housing development based on existing housing policies. Again, the city has an adopted housing element. Along with that, there's arena allocation in terms of what our anticipated housing needs are in the future. Our adopted housing element does not anticipate additional housing development in the South Morro Hills area beyond what's allowed under existing general plan and zoning. So in that case, we're not, the city isn't reliant on that area to meet its future housing goals as they exist in our current housing element. No, another conclusion is no net impact on the funding of infrastructure. The city does have policies in place which ensure that any new development is zero net in terms of impacts to the city, in terms of the cost of infrastructure, and that wouldn't change under the SOAR initiative, with or without the initiative. The potential to impact employment goals, there is a small potential, again, and it kind of ties back to the possibility, if in fact, that land were to become targeted for future industrial development, then certainly it would impact the employment that it would for future industrial development, then certainly it would impact the employment that it would otherwise be realized by such development. The city, as you do also know, has a goal of providing one job per housing unit in the city. And certainly, by limiting development out there, that does compromise that, the potential to reach that goal in the future. The conclusions would also serve to protect open space and agricultural lands. Of course, that goes without saying. That's kind of the basis of the initiative. And then finally, there would be little to no impacts on revitalization plans on, or on existing business districts. And that's generally, the reason for that is, if there were no additional development allowed in that area beyond the existing general plan, it could have the potential to actually strengthen some of our existing business districts, because businesses which might otherwise locate that area would in fact be channeled to our existing business districts. So, with that, those are the high-level findings that were made in the report. Again, the consultant is here, and we're certainly available to answer any additional questions that you may have at this time.
We have ten members of the public which will speak on this item. At this time, we'll begin calling them forward. I'll call you two at a time. First two speakers are Dennis Martinick and Susie Martinick.
Members of the council, Mayor. The 9212 report on the SOAR initiative was extremely positive in its interpretation of the potential impacts of the initiative on citizens of Oceanside. The hard work and lengthy research that we did in forming the initiative, I think paid results. In its preparation, we considered the potential problems and we tried to address those. I think we effectively did that, as the 9212 report shows. The findings of the report are clear statements that indicate that SOAR initiative will have positive impacts on the city's residents, and it gives them the right to vote on issues affecting land use decisions as they relate to parks, open space, and farmland. The summary in the back, and if you look at the page numbers in the back of your report, page 14 starts it off, and I'm quoting the, what I have on there in quotation marks, are exact quotes from the report. "Based on fiscal impact analysis completed for this report, the city's general fund cash flow is projected to improve substantially under each of the development scenarios considered in this report, that is with or without SOAR." Also, in the fiscal analysis, what they have done is do a 20-year projection, okay, 20-year projection, and not considering the impacts of agritourism, and not considering the impacts of the limited infrastructure that would be required under items two and three. So it's distorted in that way, and inaccurate. SOAR would have a much more positive impact than what they're implying here. And the 10%, the 900,000 difference between the SOAR initiative being implemented and the extreme, number four, where you'd put industry in the agricultural area, and also put homes, was, again, less than 10% over a 20-year projection. That's in anybody's margin of error. The second item, as described in detail in the report, it's the TDNG's conclusion that SOAR would not create any inconsistencies with the city's housing element. We agree, it was written so that would be the case. Three, it is the TDNG's conclusion that SOAR would have no measurable impact on housing development relative to the existing city policy and official growth forecast from Sanday. Again, we consider that so that it wouldn't have any harm to the city in those respects. Four, it is TDNG's conclusion that SOAR would not impact net funding for infrastructure. The five, and seven especially, open space is provided, traffic congestion is limited, and these are exact quotes from the report.
Hello, my name is Susie Martinick. I'll be speaking on three issues. The first issue is, one argument trying to be made by a few farmers against SOAR initiative is that they will not be able to obtain loans for their farming endeavors. As most people know, there is a lending principle called the four Cs: character, credit, capacity, and collateral. These four Cs of credit is a system used by lenders to gauge the creditworthiness of potential borrowers in an attempt to estimate the chance of default. With the passage of the SOAR initiative, one's creditworthiness does not change. It can only be changed by poor behavior on the part of the borrower. The 9214 report ordered by the city council a few weeks ago clearly states the following, quote, "The city's focus on agritourism would potentially be enhanced by the proposed SOAR initiative by ensuring that the agricultural composition and character of the South Morrow Hills community is preserved," end of quote. Increased agritourism would result in increased property value. Second issue, we need to pay particular attention to El Corazon. It was first agreed upon to be used as a regional park with little commercial and residential development. Already, it has been chipped away by the city council, allowing larger projects than were agreed upon. The 19, the 9212 report, I referred to the one ordered by the city council, again, clearly states, quote, "SOAR would create additional barriers to the conversion of parks and open spaces, spaces, and other land uses," end of quote. Third issue, the SOAR initiative is not only about saving the city of Oceanside's agricultural lands and resources, but is also about saving our open spaces, parks, and golf courses, thereby reducing greenhouse gases, traffic, sprawl, and increased costs of infrastructure. It also improves safety by providing safe evacuation routes. All of this is so important to the citizens of Oceanside, their young families, their future generations, they deserve the right to vote on these important issues.
Our next two speakers are Scott Ashton and Jamie Thompson.
And I would ask if you please hold your applause, and also, just as an announcement, at six o'clock, we will be going to the public hearing item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Scott Ashton. I'm CEO of Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, and on behalf of the chamber and the hundreds of businesses and local employees that we represent, I'm here to express our concerns with the SOAR ballot measure and the consequences it will have for our city, local workforce, and our economy. The 9212 impact report completed for the initiative states very clearly that SOAR could potentially have a negative impact on Oceanside's ability to attract and retain business and employment. This is the driving reason why the Oceanside Chamber formally opposes this initiative. Owners' requirements and regulations always hamper business, and this measure is no different. Furthermore, SOAR encourages the wrong kind of housing development, expensive homes on large lots, the kind of homes that working families cannot afford, which has a cascading impact on our community. A lack of housing makes it harder for businesses to attract quality workers, making those businesses less likely to invest in growing their businesses and more likely to move elsewhere. As the study points out, Oceanside's job-to-housing ratio must increase for our economy to grow and our housing market to stay in balance in the long term. SOAR will make the goal harder to achieve, hurting local businesses and workers, ultimately resulting in less revenue for crucial public services like police, fire, and infrastructure projects. Even tonight, you will decide whether to place a half-cent sales tax initiative on the November ballot to fill in the budget gaps. This is the time to encourage revenue-generating economic activity and not to limit it. The impact report is clear in its assessment of SOAR. This measure is bad for workers, bad for business, and bad for the city. I urge you to allow the citizens the opportunity to vote, and to do so well-informed by an impartial analysis of the measure and a complete set of ballot arguments.
Hello, my name is Jamie Thompson. In regards to the SOAR, I spoke on this last time I was here. We're here because the city council didn't listen. And, you know, I'm for the SOAR because it takes the three people to vote to say, "We don't want, we want to build all these houses." And, you know, if, if we, as the people come up to you every time and say, "You know, this isn't the right place for this," and you guys say, "Oh, okay, we don't want this." And we did that. And you guys, the, the project came up and said, "Hey, this, we want to build this project here." And all of the interior part of Oceanside said, "Hey, this isn't the right place for you to build this, it's too many houses for this location." And they said, "No." And then they came up to you, and we all came up to you, and you guys, as the city council said, "Why don't you go back and work with the city and come back at less than 500?" And, for the North River Farms. And they came back and said, "Nope, we're gonna, we're gonna do 760 or 70 or whatever it was, was the final number." So basically, they just rubbed your nose back in it and said, "Yep, it's gonna be 700." So even they rubbed your nose in it after you guys said that number. And so now, they didn't listen to you either. So now, we're at SOAR, and that's what it is. So now it's to the November ballot. You know, unfortunately, that's, that's where we are. And so, now it's to the people again, instead of you. And we would wish you would have listened to us the first time. And so, now we've, we've had to take the power away from you, and we wish we had have given you the power to listen to the people and say, "Ah, this is what you want, and we understand. We will do what you need as the people." And so, you know, this, this report that's come in, he's put it out quite clearly that it's not really going to affect, and it's a positive situation. And, you know, it is what it is. It's only a 10%, and, and that is not much of a change. That's a plus or minus in any direction as it is in almost any report. And so, I think it's a positive report, showing that there's not gonna be much of a difference. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Kyle Crail-Frolander and Letitia Pepper.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, my name is Kyle Crail-Frolander, and although I am vice chair of the Planning Commission, I do not represent the Planning Commission tonight. Our general plan is the fundamental document that guides the growth and helps protect the quality of life in our community. The SOAR proposal would give Oceanside residents the right to vote on changes to our general plan for lands designated as open space, parks, recreational areas, and farmland. SOAR will provide a positive fiscal, fiscal impact by encouraging smart growth and discouraging sprawl development. Oceanside will save money on infrastructure and on services. I urge you, please adopt the SOAR ordinance tonight to protect our parks and open spaces.
Letitia Pepper? Oh, thank you.
Good evening. Ironically, I'm going to have to begin my comments by saying that asking the audience to hold their applause is not proper. It doesn't save time, because people are applauding as someone finishes speaking and leaves the podium, and they stop applauding by the time the next person has arrived to speak. The reason that people need to be allowed to applaud or not applaud speakers is that's their way of showing their elected officials how they feel about that speaker's comments, and that is supposed to help guide you in deciding how popular or unpopular an idea is. So, the reason I know so much about this is because I was arrested in my city of Riverside, because after a group of very upset citizens who had got no help from their elected officials started showing up, that's what our mayor did. He told people that they could applaud him giving city employees awards, but when it got to us making comments about how unhappy we were with the lack of help we were getting with our neighborhood, he told people not to applaud. And when people who knew what the First Amendment allowed continued to applaud, I was signaled out and arrested. That did not turn out too well for the city of Riverside. They ended up settling the case for a fair amount of money because the mayor refused to publicly apologize for what he did. So, my point is, there's a reason that people have to be allowed to express their opinions on a speaker. That includes being allowed to applaud. If people wanted to boo, they could do that, too. So, it's really important that the city of Oceanside not go down that road of preventing people from commenting on public speakers. You need to know what the people in the audience think about someone's comments. What I wanted to say about SOAR is that, the more I read, the more I see how important it is to prevent local agriculture. Part of the problem we've gotten into, in terms of the environment, in terms of the use of fossil fuels, in terms of chemicals and problems with our food supply, is the centralization of agriculture. And I've heard many people who are very smart talk about, "We need to support local agriculture." And that is what SOAR does, it supports local agriculture. And I have watched, there's a guy, Luke Gurley, and people who are here know him, he started Cyclops Farms. He has an organic farm on two and a half acres in a residential area, and it has been incredibly successful. You have to get there early on Saturday mornings, because otherwise, things are all sold out, right? He, and he charges more for the things than you spend in the grocery store. That's because people know they're organic, they're produced locally, they're providing local jobs. People are willing to pay more for something that they know is better for them and their family, and they want to support local businesses. So SOAR is a good idea.
Our next two speakers are Michelle Keeler and Neil Nagata.
Good evening, Michelle Keeler, 734 Wilshire Road, Commercial Farmer in South Morrow Hills. I'm here to talk about commercial farming in Oceanside is a dying industry, and nobody's talking about that. I think we can all agree, farmers, elected officials, and residents alike would like to keep our remaining farms around. But if you want to save the farmland, you need to save the farmer and the farming operation that he's running. The SOAR initiative fails to take into account that current commercial farming is no longer viable long-term. By locking agricultural land in two-and-a-half acre minimum lots, SOAR does nothing to help these struggling farmers stay in business. Farmers cannot compete with rising water costs, labor costs, and compete with cheap foreign imports. SOAR does nothing to protect the struggling Oceanside farmers. What it does is it creates significant barriers for a struggling farmer to get creative, be on tier-one options, and do anything other than ultimately chopping up our farms into two-and-a-half acre estate homes. This is all SOAR is preserving, estate living. It does nothing to preserve the actual farmland and farming. We feel the public is misinformed about what SOAR actually protects, and we look forward to assisting in any way in educating the public of how SOAR really does affect us, Oceanside agriculture, who wants to keep farming. And I'd like to comment, before I step away, that the comment's been made that agritourism is encouraged by SOAR. And I think that that is a misrepresentation, because as the gentleman was talking about earlier, tier-one agritourism doesn't keep us in business. I don't think that many people in this room could even find 734 Wilshire Road where our farm is located. So putting a roadside flower stand does nothing to keep our 300-acre farm in business when you can't even find that roadside stand. So an organized vision plan out there to maybe cluster the homes that we could put on two-and-a-half acres, and set aside the farmland, and preserve that, which is what we want to do, and have agritourism opportunities to make that area a place that people want to come out to and experience and really enjoy, that's what we want to do. We're not looking to put high-density housing on our farm. We're third-generation farmers who love farming, and we want to make it a beautiful place for all of Oceanside.
Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Neil Nagata, I'm the owner of Nagata Brothers Farms, an Oceanside resident. I'm also the president of the Sandy Oak County Farm Bureau. My family has been living and farming in the city since before World War II. In the past few decades, it's become more and more difficult to make a living on agriculture alone. Tough market prices, and competition from Mexico, the drought, the ever-increasing water costs, and labors do not make our jobs easy. And now we are faced, this ballot initiative And now we are faced this ballot initiative that could very well put an end to farming in Oceanside. Farmers are not people who look for free rides. We work hard, and we wouldn't have it any other way. But we need flexibility to keep our farms going. This includes having options for what we do with our land. This measure handcuffs us and restricts our property rights. As a result, our property's values will go down and we'll lose financing we need to keep our operations solvent. Your impact report came to the same conclusion, and I quote, "SOAR could have a negative impact on farm appraisal values and therefore limit the ability of farmers to secure needed working capital. The situation could, in cases of marginal profitability farm operations, make it financially infeasible for farms to remain in business." And I'll tell you how tough it is to just finance our operations. You know, I understand that some people have made the argument that you're not a good business if you can't make it, but we are having a difficult time with the raising costs. If you go to Mexico, it's $8 a day for labor. Here, we're at $11 plus an hour. This initiative won't protect farms. It will put an end to them. If we can't make ends meet, we'll end up selling our property to become expensive estate homes for the wealthy. This community values agriculture. We do not want to stop farming or lose our farmland. This initiative forces us down that path. If you, if you could, I would ask you to kill this initiative now. Instead, I request that you put this initiative to the vote and allow the ballot arguments and impartial analysis to be prepared. And then when November comes, I hope everybody in this room and across Oceanside join me in voting no on this initiative. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Nadine Scott and Diane Nygaard. These will be the last two speakers on this item, and then we will go to our public hearing items, and then we'll come back to this after those items are finished.
Good evening, Nadine Scott. My dad was a farmer, and he was really full of practical common sense. When something isn't working, and farmers insist on, we have always done it this way, that's one of the reasons they're struggling. They haven't changed with the times. Instead of saying how bad this is for them, it's actually a great opportunity for them. It discusses the marijuana initiative. It discusses the agritourism tier-one. You want to keep farming? Change the way you're doing it. Get with the modern times. That's how everybody stays in business. The public is under no obligation to support your farming operation because you bought zoning with a certain general plan designation, just like we did. We're not under an obligation to let you change that. And the funny thing is, the two biggest names in farming who want to change zoning, they want high-density residential, they've already written to the city about it, they want to convert to industrial, they've already written to the city about it, staff has told them that is not desirable. The infrastructure out there won't support it. If anybody has looked at the budget, instead of spending over $6 million to revive a dead horse of the Melrose Drive extension, you should be using that money to develop your tier-two agritourism plan. That will help the farmers in spite of their crying and moaning. And you could also develop a much better marijuana initiative that will enable them to do that. And the last thing that really bugs me about what the farmers are saying, we're gonna force them to subdivide their land into two-and-a-half acres, that's baloney. They bought that land, they knew the zoning, we're not forcing them to do anything. I want to be supportive of them. But to hear them come up here and say how bad it is for them, sure, there's pressures on them, there's pressures on everyone. They stay within zoning, they're more than welcome to develop their land. But we're tired of this council not listening to the public about what we want. That's why we need SOAR. I'd encourage you to adopt it outright tonight, save the public the election costs. Let's spend our money in an intelligent manner and just bypass the costs of this election. It's ridiculous. This report is extremely positive about SOAR. It says, maybe what if, the farmers might have pressure, it might cause a problem. Do it a new way, farmers. Change with the times. We have always done it this way, no longer works. Get with it. Thank you.
Honorable mayor and council, Diane Nygaard, I am so proud of the residents of our community, the thousands of them who came forward and voted or signed the SOAR initiative. In every neighborhood across this town, they said they valued their open space and agricultural lands and wanted to preserve them. They said that they're tired of inappropriate development that impacts their neighborhood by being too dense in the wrong places, causing traffic, air pollution, and greenhouse gas problems. So I urge you to listen to the residents of this community, to adopt the SOAR ordinance outright, and tell us all that you trust us to make good decisions about our community that we love. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we're gonna move on to the public hearing items. I will take, okay, we'll take a short break, and then we'll go to the public hearing items. And just for everyone who is here for SOAR, we're going to return to that item at a later time, later in this council meeting. You'll still have the opportunity to speak, and then the council will vote on that item, just for clarification.